Alright, so the time is now six o'clock, we're going to get started. Welcome everybody to the June ninth school committee meeting. Start off with the pledge of allegiance, the flag is to the left of myself and to your right. Pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the flag of the British Empire, to the nation of God, indivisible, infinite, just as you are. Just a point of conduct, if anybody is recording this meeting, please let us know for the record. First meeting agenda item is the vote to approve the meeting minutes of the May twenty sixth open session. Does everybody have a chance to read those?
Yes.
Any questions, comments, concerns? Entertainer motion to approve the minutes as written, so there's a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
This is Cohen.
I wasn't here, so I have to abstain, correct?
Yes. Alright, the next agenda item is the warrants. Like to enter into the public record that I have approved school expense warrant dated June second, three hundred and ninety-four thousand one hundred and forty-five dollars fifty-eight cents. Payroll warrant also June second, one million two hundred and forty-four thousand eight hundred and seventy-nine forty-two. Next item is the student representative update. Miss Savas.
So I am no longer solo, this is my new co-representative, and you can introduce yourself to me.
Hi, my name is Tony Romano, I'm in ninth grade going to tenth, and I'm excited to be here.
Okay, not so much detail, prep.
I am pretty much here to make sure that every student's voice is being heard through this committee.
It's nice to have you at the table, Malia.
Oh yeah.
We've only seen you on TV this year.
But yeah, that's pretty much kind of what we have for you guys today, I thought about it as twenty, I just kind of get into it a little bit before we go right back into the updates. So, yeah, we're excited to start as a team.
That's great.
Yeah, some big shoes to fill, for sure. No pressure, but with Malia guiding you, I'm sure you'll do fine. So what do you guys have for us for a moment?
Yeah, just, I just wanted to let it kind of pay after the.
I was waiting for the punchline.
The middle school play is tonight, if anybody after this wants to go downstairs.
Yeah, I mean, the plane is happening tonight, we just have the history filtered for the JCS, which was fun, it went around forty third graders yesterday. It's a lot. Covering from that a little bit, to be honest with you. Oh yeah, the eighth grade, like, tour and panelists today, you were on this.
I was on panel. Careful, I have one of those. Yeah, I feel like they were excited.
I guess it comes.
A little bit, it took a little convincing, but I feel like they're ready to come up.
And same for third and fifth grade too, they're also starting their, like, I remember like when I was in the middle school, it seemed like the biggest school.
Right. Move on to the next agenda item, pre-apprentice program, Mrs. Prue and some students.
There is a PowerPoint.
Yes, there's a presentation. So, along with me, I have.
This is Ryan. PJ and Devin, they were part of the program that we brought into the high school the week of May twenty-third. And it is from the mass COT program, fully funded through them. And we were looking for opportunities to give students who are looking to go into the union, go into the workforce right after high school. Maybe go to college a little bit later, but maybe go into one of those fields right after high school. And we brought in the program, and is the. So again, it's fully funded, the students didn't pay for it, we didn't pay for it, but you're allowed fifteen to twenty students to go through the program, and there are huge benefits for students that do outstanding in the program, which we have some of the students here that were qualified as outstanding, so some of those benefits are, if they end up going into the apprenticeship program for one of the unions, they get thirty credit hours. They also get any resume services, they help them get jobs, they help them get jobs, mock interviews, any of that sort of stuff. They also will pay for any sort of licenses that they're interested in, so hoisting licenses, drone licenses, the CBL licenses, any of that sort of thing. The program is also partnered with, I wrote it down because I wouldn't remember it, UMass Transportation, B-State Roads, so any classes that they want to further their education with or take classes there will be fully paid for as well. So, it's like.
Wait one second, I apologize, it's just not, oh my god, so, I'm just gonna check with them online. See if they can see it.
Okay.
I can see it online. Sure, you see it.
I can see the picture of all the students with the bulldozer in the back.
Yeah, that's the first picture. I am rolling it up right now.
So if you want to continue while we're waiting for our presentations.
Yeah. Sheri, can you, Sheri, can you turn off your camera?
Can I?
Yes, just turn off your camera for a second.
There we go.
Okay, so these are all the students that were part of the pre-apprenticeship program. So, next. And again, this was kind of what I was talking about, so it's four full days of instruction, one day they did go on a field trip to Hockington, to the Labor Safety Academy up there, and again, it's fifteen to twenty students. And they were given all the PPE that they would need, the hard hat, safety glasses, work gloves, safety vest, equipment bag, the whole program itself, everything, like I said, was fully funded. And that's just a quick, like, schedule of what the week was, so Monday, the intro, they did, went over their resumes, updated those, they went over work zone safety. Tuesday, they did construction math, surveying, the students all got their PPE. Wednesday, they went on a field trip. Thursday, they got their CPR first aid training, and then Friday was all hands-on concrete work. So, next. And then these were the benefits that I was saying before, they get thirty hours of credit towards the first year's class if they get into one of the labor's apprenticeship programs. Outstanding graduates get a four-week paid co-op, possibly with the highway or maintenance department. And then the program graduates are eligible for all of those employment opportunities, the resume review, interview preparation, all of that. And then, again, like I was saying, the Class B CDL license, the hoisting drone, and all the training programs. So, a lot of benefits. Next. These are just some pictures of what they were doing for all the week.
The first day was really just getting to know each other, and we did resumes, which really, I think, helped, it showed us where to go to get into the workforce and when. He provided us with dates and locations, as well as he helped us make resumes and have those resumes revised by other people, so that we could really see, like, what we should put on it, like references and experience, and what would be relevant to getting into the workforce, which I thought was really helpful, just because a lot of people don't know where to go to actually get into the construction business, to get into a labor union. Because a lot of construction is just like knowing people, so once you are given those connections, given those phone numbers, it's a lot easier to get started, have a groundwork.
So, so do you guys all now have regular ready resume to go?
Yes.
Have you guys, or like, reached out and made connections and have any, like, interviews?
We all have, I believe it's Dr. Charler in that picture up there, we all have his contact information, as well as some of his contacts.
And he's somebody who will stay connected with them as long as they stay connected for years, there was a
Fast student from Southeastern.
Yeah, that lives in Norton.
I worked for him, and they're gonna pay for a CBLV.
But he was, what, five years ago?
Yeah, five, six years ago.
Now, is there anything, I know, is there a certain age limit for this, like, do you have to be eighteen to get some of these licenses?
Yes, so the program is for juniors to seniors, they prefer seniors because they can take you right after the program into the workforce. But absolutely juniors, getting them involved, and then sometimes they actually, like, if you're doing junior year, and they come back to do senior year again. So, there's that opportunity as well.
This day, we basically were learning how to use the tripods, how to set them up, so you learn how to keep the tripod level, never use the this little camera that you see on top of the tripod, that is the level that you use to survey the land. We used a, you gotta do an X mark, so that, basically that mark is your starting mark, and then you have to use all these other marks, and then we had to measure the land and then survey it. So, and then we all got tested on it, so we put it up on a whiteboard, everybody score, then you base it off of who did the best. So on that day, we learned a lot, and that day actually helped us out, pretty much, because we got to use the equipment, we got to go hands-on, which I feel is very important for us, because it teaches us how they work at a site, and how the beginning of the site just starts, and it's very neat for us, gives us great opportunities for the future.
And it was a really good day as well, a number of the groups almost hit perfect marks on it, so when I walked in to kind of check the group, there were all circles, and there were a couple of groups that were completely perfect, and Mr. Lemon pulled me aside, he said, I want you to know all those circles there, that's unbelievable, I had to take a screenshot and send it to Jeff, because he's like, you've never, I've never seen anything like this, so the kids did an amazing job with it.
I think one of the important things is, we have the first non-vocational public high school to go through the program, so even more impressed that these are non-students who had, you know, that experience and forces. That this was all right from their college.
And that's something I forgot to say at the beginning, we typically would not have had this program, been able to come into Norton, but because of the chapter seventy-four classes, we were able to bring it in. We're the only school, public school, non-tech school that has ever had a program, and because of us. They've gotten a couple calls, so, it was great.
And how many students were in it?
Fifteen.
And was it, like, was that the max, or we could have had thirty?
We could have gone, no, twenty's the max, twenty is what they will take.
Well, I mean, I actually, I saw this in the packet, and I was kind of excited, because my son is in the trades. And at graduation, I met one of the graduates of this program, he was ecstatic that he had another option. So I think this is great, I think this is something we need to look to try to keep up with.
So, the field trip day?
We just kind of went to the training facility, and talked about a lot of the renovations they're having. And actually, a lot of stuff that he was talking about was being used on the construction sites, and then we just kind of drove the little big machine.
You guys had to do the water test?
Yeah, we had to pick up a pallet with it, put it on scaffolding, and we'd take it back down.
Which they made me do too. Next, yeah. And then the last two days, they all were certified CPR training and first aid, and then this is the concrete day.
So the concrete day, we all got a concrete bag, all the tools and equipment to, like, make a little standing platform of concrete. We poured it, so, mixed it and everything, and then we had to actually keep the concrete afterwards.
So they learned to build the forms, they did all the cutting and.
After you sent that email, I went out and I asked all the janitors, Mr. Sumner, like, the office, and it was, like, gone, and then I even went after school and asked the construction workers that were, like, working on the track, I was like, do you know where it went? And they were like, I don't know why I would know where that went.
Do you have the skills, Ms. Mares?
Next. And this is just more concrete work, so, um, Steve had come and helped us, and we were just outside, and it was basically a whole day project, but completely hands-on. They had to do all the math calculations by hand, they were not allowed calculators, cell phones to use, any of that, so now they're actually applying everything that they're learning in math and in their algebra classes to real-life situations, so that was a huge benefit for them to see. Next. And then these are all the graduates, his name was Mr. Lemon, so they.
Lem Dog?
Yes, and they gave him a bunch of lemons, but that is all of them, so. But within that week, they were able to form, like, these great connections as well, and again, these two are men that will, if they remain connected with them, they will do whatever they can, so one of the things, like, the CDL license or the hoisting license, he said, the first time you take it, we know you're gonna fail it, it's, it's a hard license to get, but they're willing to pay, and they'll just pay, and if you stay connected with them, like the example PJ gave, that person owns his own business, and he found out about the connection, goes, hey, does he have, was the CDL license, right?
Yeah.
He was like, does he have a CDL license? I don't know, he goes, find out, tell him if he doesn't have it, I'll pay it for it, he hadn't talked to that gentleman in, like, five years, and so, it's just, it's a great connection to have. So, next. And then these are just some of the things that the students had said, so I don't know, I know you had a comment, PJ, but, comment about, uh, just how you guys felt, like, it was worth it, right?
Yeah, I, I feel like it's more important to the public schools than the vocational schools, because the vocational schools' kids aren't gonna take it as seriously as the public school kids were, because they get the opportunity all the time for this, they get their co-ops, they get all this stuff, they get set up by the school. For this with the public tools, you don't ever see this happening, you don't ever get set up like this.
Well, I mean, I think construction as a whole, it's somewhat recession-proof, it's always a need, so I think it's, it's a tremendous career opportunity that, you know, people are seeing the trades change now that these, the trades are more needed now than they have been in the past. It was a great opportunity for you guys.
I mean, they were talking about, um, starting off, some of the outstanding students, if they were able to get in, you'd start off at, like, forty, forty-five thousand, and he said, within two years, we potentially be getting you up to, like, over a hundred. Well, I probably should have gone in that. So, I don't know, do you have any questions?
No, but I can just make a quick comment, I think that one of the things that we strive to always do is be leaders in sort of a lot of different aspects of public education, so a huge thank you for really finding an opportunity for, once again, Norton to kind of start this trend, because my guess is, is that other high schools are going to be following in the footsteps. So, whoever brought it to the school, whoever found it, and kind of brought it to the school, huge thank yous.
It was Ms. Prue, she founded, she asked me to do it, she was supportive.
Yeah, it was pretty, I mean, it fits perfectly into the whole idea of the pathways that we're talking about, the one that you've already approved. So Ms. Prue came, came to, actually, to Mr. Cersei, and Mr. Cersei came to me in the fall and said, hey, what do you think? It's only a week, so it really became my job to just make sure the administration recognized the flexibility that was needed for both Ms. Prue and the student scheduling, because they were pulled out of their classes for that entire week. And if anything, it's probably motivational to catch up on any work or anything, because we hope to do this, we have a follow-up next week or the week after with the focus on the other end of this, to really formalize this into something a little bit more.
There's some more opportunities that we can bring in, more things, programs, like even week-long things over the summer, and different things like that, that.
I think that's what we're always trying to do, is to meet individual needs, and we talk about that a lot, is that there's sort of this preconceived idea, I think a lot of times, that students who are in high school shouldn't automatically and immediately go to college, and I'm not sure that that is the option for all students. And I think just sort of something that we've talked about for a few years now is, what other opportunities can we offer to our students to let them know that there are other options, and really good options? So, this is just one of those opportunities that I really appreciate you discovering and introducing to our campus.
One of the things that's really interesting, I went outside the day, the Masonry, where the guys were more all different, they had the boxes and all that, I think I told a couple of them the other day, right before town meeting, I mean, Mr. Lem Dog. He literally treats them without any swearing or inappropriate language, like they're on a construction site, I mean, he's, I mean, he's just letting them know, hey, that is not the right way to do that, and that it's not, it's not monotone, it's, let's get this done the right way, so I appreciated that the students were kind of like, hey, this was a great week to just learn how the real world, in a laborer type of situation. Best comment for me is the student that said, this was the best week of school ever, I mean, if that's not motivational, that's, that's kind of cool, so I hope to see you guys.
The juniors that are in the program, if they do get those benefits, now going into senior year, they already have a plan, they already have something going out, which is great, it's not going into senior, I don't know what I'm gonna do, or I need to try to they already have this plan, they have these connections, and they can formulate something, and there's also job opportunities that you guys were presented for summer, potential to apply for, so, it's great.
Congratulations, guys.
Thank you so much, good job, really good job. You did a lovely job, thank you.
Thank you.
The next agenda item is vote to appoint a school committee member to the capital improvement. You already read my mind. So, is there a motion? Or an individual who would like to be considered? Sheri, we're all looking at you.
I can tell you're all looking at me, yeah, I'll do it again.
I would nominate Sheri Cohen.
A second denomination.
All of them favor to appoint Sheri Cohen to capital improvement? Alright, next item is, oh, thank you, Mr. Cohen. Next item is for Mr. Cersei, discussion on transition specialist and our professional.
And Ms. Russo's.
Sorry, Casey.
I'm actually gonna let Ms. Russo start, and then fill in from there.
Alright, hi guys, thank you so much, so we are proposing a new job description for a transition specialist slash special education teacher, as well as a paraprofessional job coach. Students who have disabilities or are on an IEP are, were required to look at post-secondary opportunities for them, starting at the age of fourteen, and it is really not so much a mandate, but a strongly suggested requirement to have a transition specialist in the school system to help those students prepare for post-secondary life, whether that be college career, or preparing for adult services for those of our, of our students who are there until twenty-two, their twenty-second birthday. So we're proposing that, we had been, we had posted for a point-five transition specialist originally, and we got a whopping zero applicants for that position. So it's a little difficult, but we were able to attend and collaborate with some other districts in the area who have actually done this previously, worked to create a combined transition specialist slash special education position. And the person works not only with the students on their caseload, but a lot of the other kiddos who are working on their transition goals as well, doing the transition assessments to help find, to clear and define that, that pathway that they want to pursue, based upon their interests, their ability levels, things along those lines. Really working with adult service agencies to help collaborate and connect and build those, those bridges for them, once they leave Norton High School, again, whether that be community college, four-year college employment, or again, like I said, going off to those adult day programs, helping with independent living skills, all those kinds of things. The person would also be responsible for the step-out classroom, so really being the liaison for the students in our eighteen-to-twenty-two program, really focusing on more of those independent living skills, those IADLs, as we call them, independent activities of daily living, preparing for post-secondary work. And taking, taking a focus more away from the classroom setting, and really putting it toward the functional skills that we should be looking at for those, for those kiddos, or young adults, I should say. We currently do transition assessments with our special educators, this would take a little bit of a, that load off of their shoulders, and really have this one person doing those assessments, being able to specialize in that role. And we've also done some transition assessments that we've had to contract out for, for more specialized stuff, and we're hoping that this will alleviate that as well, for our transition specialists to be able to really hone in on certain skills and things along those lines. And then to go along with that, we've had two paraprofessionals in the, in the step-out program currently, but really wanting to make one of those people a job coach, again, focusing on more of those adult-focused skills, less of the high school student academic-type focus, but really working on those job readiness skills, how, the personal hygiene stuff, working on the punctuality and effective communication, modeling all of those things for the person. But the biggest thing here would be that the individuals, both the transition specialist and the job coach, we would request that they get a seven, or mandate that we get, that they get a seven D license. Our students in the transition ages really should be getting out more often, working in the community, doing volunteer work, getting exposed to different settings, now that we, now that we're hopefully, over the hump of COVID, we can start getting out and doing those things again. They had been previously doing that prior to COVID, and we would like for them to get back into that role, we've been able to collaborate and connect with some people at the league school and in other local districts that have really made some great connections with vocational opportunities for their students, and they've been very forthcoming in sharing those with us, and giving us some, some good connections as well. So really just trying to build on that independence level of our students, kind of tag-teaming off of what Ms. Prue's been doing with the vocational piece on her end, but doing it through the special education aspect for us.
I think one of the other things, the person will be responsible, is making those connections to community agencies, so we do have some relationships with, like, out-of-home enterprises, and we'll start to do some of this work, but making those connections, building that strength here in the school system, but then making those connections for families as these students turn twenty-two and move forward. And really developing the collaborative relationships that is just harder to do if you're doing, you're not, that isn't your focus, so having this be their focus, I think, will not just support our students while they're with us, but honestly, will support their transition in what they do as they enter their, their adult years, and really support the families, because they have to navigate a pretty tricky adult system, so, there'll be that piece of it. The other piece of that, as Casey said, we do hope to have, we need these folks to have a seven D license, we're gonna advertise, we do our job search for that, hopefully we'll get somebody. But that may be something to just be forthcoming, and we may have to support financially in order for them to get that, depending on who gets it by, but it's a small, relatively small price tag for what we're gonna be able to do with this. And we're not adding staff, we're just sort of, you know.
Any questions from the committee?
So, we talked about cost, do you want to just kind of go over that?
Yeah, so in general, what you're looking
Yeah, so in general, what what you're looking at, because it's everything's done internally, as you know, we posted for as part of our operational budget, a point five. Uh, position. So what we're going to see here is a savings, probably in the, if the person gets the seven, we can get the person with the seventy, probably be a positive to the budget of about ten thousand dollars. Um, so could be a little bit more. You know, if the person doesn't test the first time, we have to do a, a second reimbursement, but I, I, we feel comfortable. Um, I appreciate very much the special education department doing this because it is a opportunity for our students, number one. Just for the general public to know, since we're also being taped, um, public schools have a responsibility for certain populations of students until the age of twenty-two. Just want to make sure that everybody knows that. This is not something that we're trying to create. This is our responsibility per um, state law and federal law. And getting these students out to the, to the potential uh, community college or four-year school specialized program. As you've heard a few years ago before COVID, we have students that are going off to one of the local colleges. Um, then you have the whole career connection. And right now with so many businesses really hurting for employment locally, uh, that could be very fruitful for our students. Um, in this particular age and to be mindful, the classrooms part of this is that this starts at fourteen, right, because it starts when they're eighteen. Uh, this is uh, something that as I come into the ninth grade, really for me, the ninth grade, we um, start the, to that process. So net to the district budget, very positive, net to the ability to um, meet a best practice for these, for these students that we'll be servicing. It's also very pleasant.
And I should say the, the transition specialist is not mandated, however, the activities that they're going to be doing are mandated. So somebody has to do it. Uh, this is just somebody who's specialized.
Well, both of these positions are, um, as you know by the titles, teacher and para, they are unique positions. The job descriptions have a share with the NTA, the NTA has endorsed them as published um, today.
Hey, that's how they, as Casey would strongly recommend that. You don't have to have it.
You don't have to have it.
But you have something to do with it.
You don't have to have it, but if you don't have it, you're going to be in trouble when we come see you.
So it's during, it's during, so just in my last district, this, this was a big deal. Many years ago, but it's still the same honor report. What happens is they audit you for it. And then when something happens with the Office of Civil Rights, this is one of the things that they come after, is they say, well, you didn't do that part and you should have had somebody in charge of that and so on, so. I do need a vote because it is considered a job description and that is a control.
Any other questions, comments?
How many, about how many students with the uh, transition specialists, how long their caseload?
Yeah, so um, in terms of the classroom setting, there is currently four students in that cla, that step-out classroom. Um, so four students that we have between the ages of eighteen and twenty and they're both their twenty-second birthday. Um, but then they would theoretically be working with all of our students on IEPs at the high school level at some point. Which is a significant number. I think it's about a hundred and ten.
I'm a little confused. So is it, are these both new positions or are they both kind of more of a reorg?
Which essentially is a reorg, um, the, the. We had a step-out teacher.
Yep.
Um, and that person is going to take on the transition specialist role. Um, and then the job coach is a paraprofessional position that will has a little bit more responsibilities. Um, to do some of that vocational work, um, pursue some of those, those pieces. So it's, it's a little bit of a reorganization of, of the specialty department. In terms of both the step-out and step-up kids. But also are some of the, the work that our inclusion teachers now will, will have a specialist doing those transition assessments. Um, and that's where we say, well, it could be up to a hundred kids that get a form of transition support.
I guess my last one is, have we brought in any parents or CPAC in terms of talking to them?
Yeah.
Yes, CPAC is on board with us, yes.
Anything else? Mrs. Cohen, did you have anything?
I do not.
Alright, this time entertaining motion to approve the transition specialist slash special education teacher and paraprofessional job coach descriptions as they are presented. So, second.
Second.
All is in favor.
Hi.
Hi.
Alright.
Thank you.
Oh, you don't have to.
Alright, next item is vote to approve the FY twenty-three budgets.
So as per every year, once town meeting is over, which this year was late or later than usual. Um, the school committee has to revoke its budget that has been provided by the town meeting. That budget is now set at thirty-two billion nine hundred fifteen thousand nine hundred ninety-six dollars or an increase of six hundred forty-five thousand four hundred twelve dollars. Your recommended, recommended budget was one million five hundred sixty thousand nine hundred twenty-six, therefore we have to absorb nine hundred fifteen thousand four hundred fourteen. Dollar in cuts. We will zero out the federal grant at half a million. Um, that will take care of all of those grants that we received throughout the last eighteen months. And then uh, we have informed the permanent subs ten in each of the buildings that they are at this time laid off for two hundred fifty thousand. Uh, and then we had a student information system at sixty thousand uh, that we are not going to go forward with. And we have room for support contracts, let's talk, ClearGov, leadership PD. College career readiness, library, uh, and uh, and non-highly used software that will make up for the other hundred forty thousand four hundred fourteen, thereby. Zeroing out the budget and to your comment, you'll get a line item budget after this approval that shows um, all these changes. The number on the bottom will be the same as the one that you voted tonight.
Should we guess? I don't want to line it up the full amount. I do want to line it.
Yes, definitely, I'll give it to you. Uh, we'll, we'll give you the line item budget and with a memo attached to what those changes were.
I mean, I'll leave it, you know, it's like eighteen pages.
Yeah. We'll send you the. We'll send you the email on which one you want. If you want both, we'll give you both. If you don't want the one page, we'll give you the one.
Yeah, I think that's sufficient. Any other questions or comments on the budget?
Yes.
Just state your name and address.
Chuck Gallagher, two-one, they wrote, I'm just curious as to what has happened between last year, that last budget and this budget. For you up so high. I mean, all those contracts, those raises, it seems like an awful lot, I don't think you have an idea of what.
So the, the mandated, um, the total increase to the budget from the town is two percent. The mandated uh, part of the budget itself is two point three three. So right off the bat, being mandated, so this would be ELL five oh four, special education is already not fully funded and I'm federally required to stay required to federally fund that budget. The general education budget, meaning everything else, um, excluding transportation, which was up less than, I think, point one nine percent, the total's about sixty thousand. I have to transport the kids, I don't have a choice in that contract. And then the, all of the general education requirements that go into the regular general education have to absorb the remaining amount. So we took the federal grant to take up fifty percent of that and the four hundred fourteen thousand really comes out of what would be general education. Because I am not allowed to touch the mandated, I can't cut, for example, a special education teacher that's giving direct services to students. Because then I violate the rights. Uh, so those, the, the direct impact is district-wide. We are not laying off any teachers in the classroom. But what we did is we took all of our teachers that are covered on absences and so on. Um, they're called permanent substitutes. Those folks were all relieved of their duties at this time. Things changed throughout the summer because of people moving, saving money because people moved and all of that. Then we'll probably at some point have to have some type of substitute in that role. So that's the general.
I guess what I'm saying, I don't see a financial, what is going on? Six hundred thousand dollars.
Uh, all of our contracts and all of our special education costs. For example, I have um, an increase of, of, from last year to this year of students that go out of district of twelve percent. So if I had one point two million dollars worth of students out of district, add another twelve percent to that from last year to this year. So every line item that we have that are mandated services, I have to cover those. I can only cover those by either getting more money or by taking it from other accounts within the, the operating budget.
How many students have gone out of district?
We have thirty-three students out of district currently. We have many, sixty.
How much was your other district last contract?
Uh, we had, we had uh, thirty-three last year, we have thirty-three currently. And that number can change, that the number of students going out of district is day-to-day. For, I know, for example, um, from the day that we voted the school committee budget and it got sent to the town before town meeting. We had an added district placement that is costing us over two hundred thousand dollars a year starting on July first. We have no other way except to pay that bill. You can't go to the state for it, you can't, so on and so forth. So that's what happens with these costs. A few years ago, we had eight students move into town during the months of July and August that cost us eight hundred thousand dollars. So we had, we basically took from other line items, zeroed them out, everything from paper and software, uh, personnel, uh, if needed. And then went back to the town for some more of those months.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, entertaining motion to approve the budget as presented.
Some of.
Second. Second. All is in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Uh, next item agenda, agenda item, uh, summer transfers, Mr. Miles.
Yes, so um, first day regulations, the school committee has to vote any transfers that occur between expenses and salary accounts. It's our annual request to uh, for a vote approval to allow us to make those transfers between now and July fifteenth, which is the end of this week here. Uh, to be able to balance out these accounts.
No, so this is just moving like A to B?
Yes, yeah. Bottom line does not change, it's just balancing out the.
Questions, comments?
Do we have an idea on? What would be taken from more to replace something with? Would it be more from line items to salaries or salaries to?
No idea at this point. We have uh, three more salary, uh, three more payrolls this year. Uh, one of them is the final payroll of the year, which is the largest payroll we do, it's about five and a half million dollars roughly. So once that closes out, that gets us a little closer to understanding what our transfers are going to be. But again, we're, we're still waiting to receive May bills for all kinds of expenses. Right now, we only have April bills that are kind of finalized, so we still have to see May and June as well.
So this is a one-time vote that will kind of let you do your thing?
Yeah, it lets me to close the year out, so yeah, so the, the town can close, they can start their, their open on certified for cash. Um, and we can close out the year and start moving.
Also, motion to approve? Second. All is in favor?
Hi.
Okay, the next item is the superintendent's evaluation. Uh, so this, this evaluation is for two years. Um, so this is superintendent's evaluation, we, uh. We as a school committee vote for. Each are given a packet. Um, so some of the comments are, I shouldn't say professional goals, student goals, district goals were all met. As far as uh, step two, assess performance on standards. Standard one, instructional leadership, standard two, management operations, standard three, family community engagement, standard four, professional culture. Instructional leadership was proficient, the remainder were exemplary. Um, overall, the summer performance was exemplary by the committee. Do you want to read the comments?
Very, it's your decision, none of the evaluators.
Uh, some of the comments that were set by the committee are sent in. Dr. Bad does an excellent job managing our district, we're lucky to have him. Progressive, creative and intelligent leader, collaboration with all aspects of town management, supports every child academically and socially. Uh, under Joe's leadership, MPS continues to be a quality, academically and emotionally strong institution. Uh, Dr. Bad has led the district through some extraordinary times in the last few years. All decisions are made with the best interest of students and staff. Uh, in these challenging times, Dr. Bad has continued to seek the brightest and best for positions at MPS. Continues for MPS is one of the best districts in the area. Uh, superintendent's performance goals, uh, student learning goal, professional practice goal, district improvement goal, one, two, three, and four. Uh, ensures effective and timely supervision of evaluation of all staff in alignment with state regulations and contract provisions, that was met. Uh, ensures effective and timely supervision and evaluation of all staff in alignment with state regulations and provisions was met. Sure as all instructional staff, design effective, rigorous standards based units of instruction was met. Sure as all practice in all settings reflect high expectations regarding content, quality of work, engaging all students. And personalized to accommodate diverse learning styles, needs, interests, levels of readiness was met. Implementing cohesive approach to recruiting, hiring, production, development and career growth was also met. Uh, let's see, instructional leadership, curriculum, instruction, assessment, evaluation, data from decision-making, student learning. Curriculum was proficient, structure was proficient, assessment was exemplary, evaluation was proficient. Data and decision-making was exemplary, um, overall rating was proficient. Some of the comments, you are successful in making procedures a follow, empowering individuals to solve their problems at individual levels first. You continually put the right people in the right positions to maintain successful teaching, learning outcomes and expectations that supports our budgets bottom line. Strengths include instructional learning walks and classroom visits, leadership discussions about classroom accountability. Using surveys and portals to continue to assess needs and accountability. Dr. Bad is a hands-on leader to make sure he visits all of the schools, even going so far as to sub into classrooms if needed. Dr. Bad empowers his staff to problem-solve issues that arise in their buildings. He has continued to surround himself with some top-tier administrative staff and continues to stress accountability within the district. Uh, as far as management operations, all categories were exemplary, uh, which were. Environment, human resource management, development, scheduling, law, ethics, policies, fiscal systems. Dr. Bad continues to look outside the box to find creative ways to bring money into the district to fill our otherwise pronounced budget gap. As we saw, because we just voted the budget. Uh, you continually put the right people in the right positions to have positive effects to the budget and maintain successful teaching and learning outcomes. Um, legal accountability and depth of knowledge. Um, has lead, led us through multiple projects, including doors and windows, our current train project, our current athletic complex. And our, hopefully over COVID nineteen pandemic. He has looked to become a leading district in responding to emotional, social and emotional needs of students and staff. Lastly, for. Comments and analysis, continues to go above and beyond for all families and staff. Supports delivery of services, services, including school resource officer positions, personal transportation, athletics. One-to-one technology, internet connectivity, student safety via home visits by staff and necessary himself. Has had multiple parents' forums to address concerns, has addressed his bill for conversations, even tough ones with parents, staff, members of the school committee. He can be regularly seen at school and town events. Dr. Bad enjoys engaging with the students through his superintendent-led student group. He hears what the students' concerns are and looks for ways to address them. Dr. Bad has made MPS a better place for all and has done routinely with a tight budget and making tough budget decisions every year on staff supplies. As he carefully considers the impacts to the district. That is. Any comments?
I have a few questions, just some, I'm new to the, new to the process here. I obviously abstain from voting because, well, doing evaluations, I don't think it's fair of me, we're in. The second piece of that is, is it just us who evaluate, so the teachers and admin also have an evaluation process?
Only you, by the way.
So only us, okay. Um, that was it?
Okay.
Uh, no, it, it requires a vote of committee, thanks to the committee, uh, to my staff, administrators, the community. There's nothing better than being in a public forum and being told how good or bad you are. The only employee, it's the only place, it's the only public employee in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, the superintendent school that has a town manager. Um, everybody else's personnel record, so it always makes you feel kind of a lot about it. Um, but it's a, it's a good working district. Um, my own child attends this district, so I think. Um, my own child attends this district, so I think that speaks volumes to what I think about it, it is not perfect, it's never gonna be perfect, but. Uh, we have a lot of things to address, but um, I think that uh, the future looks good, I think coming out of this pandemic situation will only move this forward. To address all the other issues that need to be addressed and then um, I can then begin working probably on July first, begin working on the FY24 budget, because I think that's going to be a very difficult year for public entities in general from police firing schools because of the amount of federal money that's come in, that's going to be going out the door and not available. Um, and then lastly, um, the the general um, process after this kind of cycle will be that I will present to you involve brand-new goals. Brand-new initiatives in terms of the things to do over the next uh, two years. And including the new strategic plan, we'll have that for the fall. And that'll be a major part of the next four years, and you'll vote on that as well. Uh, we'll be, we'll be getting back to school, planning, um, you know, coming out of this COVID situation and planning for that as well, so I think the committee.
Alright, um, so this was provided to the committee, so hopefully you've had a chance to read it, so at this time, entertain a motion to approve the evaluation as presented, so your second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
I'm gonna move state.
Thanks.
Um, so a couple of things, this is our last school committee meeting of this school year. You're all almost there. Students and staff, so um. At this point, is there any other business?
I just, I just have um, three general statements, there'll be an information going out on Friday the 17th and Monday the 21st, being a kid as well. Early Tuesday, sorry, Tuesday the 21st, because we have to be closed on the 20th, celebration of Sunday the 19th. Uh, so we do have to come back to school on the 21st. Uh, so that Friday, and that's my big, will be half days. To my left, I want to thank Matt for his service to us over the last four years as he moves on to another district. Uh, you've only win carding gifts.
Do you want us to sign the back word?
The um, the other thing is I want to wish the kids and parents a really good summer, safe summer. And I want to thank my staff, uh, all across the district, all employees from our bus drivers, custodial administrative assistants, parents, teachers. Food services, although they're privatized, they do a great job for us. And, and uh, and then uh, when we're moving into July 5th, the beginning of E S Y, our extended uh, school year program that Casey and Benny oversee. So everybody have a safe summer, and see you on Tuesday the 6th for grades one to 12. And kindergarten starts on the 7th.
On the 8th.
On the 8th, okay, everybody is staggered in that week.
Does anybody on the committee have anything to bring up?
Uh, yeah, one thing from the permanent building committee with the town, that was uh, sure. I'm the liaison too, if you will, uh, met with them on Monday night, went really well. Uh, updated them with the athletic fields and whatnot, uh, just a few concerns as far as town hall goes. Uh, developers have it at about $3 million over budget right now due to inflation. Every cost, so they're kind of looking to hopefully cut some areas, try not to cut the structure so much and, you know, reduce square footage. Uh, so trying to find some other areas that way, it's like.
Do you, do you know what the total cost that was? Does anybody know?
Some reason 31 sticks out in my head, but that could be way off still.
I was gonna say 32, so we're pretty close.
I thought it was 22 and 11.
Yeah, and.
I think that's right, it's more 22 and 11, or 13. Yeah.
And you put in a good buffer, but unfortunately the buffer wasn't enough, because no one, no one expected this, so. Uh, and then my, one other thing here that I have, um, is I want to talk about policy around lawn signs and around school property. Uh, obviously, I know this is coming where we have lawn signs on our school property. Uh, I want to be clear that this has come to my attention due to the fact that these signs are not from Norton Public Schools. Uh, my concern is that we don't have some type of policy in place and we could open a floodgate of all the private groups and organizations to ask us to promote on their behalf. Uh, this could be problematic because it's, it's becomes a very hard spot to say no to some groups and yes to others. Um, and you know, and ultimately, it's hard to put a value on one group organization over another, and not all of our groups may uh, fully directly aligned with Norton Public Schools' belief. Uh, I did send along to the school committee and um, school admin, the US Supreme Court decision of Shertlaff. Believe that's how you say it, versus the city of Boston as a point of uh, potential reference, the city of Boston violated the First Amendment. Uh, due to the Supreme Court ruling, refusing to fly one flag while allowing others. Uh, though I know this is on a much larger scale, we could be opening ourselves to potential issues in the future. Uh, I'm the type of person who likes to be proactive rather than potentially reactive, especially as a district. Um, we did talk to legal counsel, he sent us over some options, uh, and one of the best options that I thought would fit very well for a new policy around lawn signs, banners, you know, stuff like that on school property and on, on town property as well. Um, which reads something along these lines. Uh, Norton Public Schools will not allow any outside group or community member to post any signs on school property. All signs must be furnished and have tied back to educational learning and/or promoting school-sponsored events. With a little star in there, except obviously on election day, since we do open our schools for those. Uh, all signs must be approved by Norton's School Committee prior to being placed. Uh, what I would suggest is I would like to make a motion to adopt the sign policy. Uh, as stated, and make it effective July 1st, 2022, so we kind of go into the new fiscal year with a, with a new policy in place. That's it?
Yeah, I'd, I'd want to table that until we can actually really think about it, I don't, I don't want to vote on it right away.
Do we have any discussion?
We, yeah, we can discuss, and I, I don't think it's, I don't think it's a bad idea to have a policy. Um, and this is not, this is not me saying I don't like your policy, but I, I want to read through it, think about it before I just kind of voted on it. Um, Nick, Nick knows that, um, and there are lawn signs there, and Nick knows that I somewhat disagree that this is the same case as that Supreme Court decision. Um, it is these signs that we have now, uh, were donated by an individual. We, we took them in and we decided we put them up there, so I, I don't think we're necessarily open to the same legal exposure. Um, I, I think counsel, when they gave that opinion, did not know all the facts. So, um, I, I don't think that currently we have exposure, but going forward, I, I think it's absolutely fine to have a policy. Um, and if, so if you have Nick circulate that to us, we can take a look at it.
Yeah, I would definitely say in regards to policy, we, we would need to table it, we couldn't motion and vote it tonight, because there is required by law to have two readings and two separate meetings, so. If we look at, you know, potentially working on this over the summer, we could potentially have our first reading in fall. Um, if we decide a policy to adopt, but as far as motioning and voting tonight, it can't legally be adopted. If, if, if it's deliciously committee, I can work with Nick on trying to attempt to utilize his language, and as I said in the email, any other language that folks have around we. There is an advertising policy, but this is not the same thing. Because you got to word it in a way that, for example, ITAC, does that have to come to um, the school committee to be approved, it's a community-based program that fundraises for the community. So, you gotta, and you can't have a policy that's gonna have, really can't have Hollywood exclusivity, so you gotta make it some type of connection. So if it's educational or connected to the mission or connected to, um, there's gotta be, yeah, like football sign-ups would have to come to you guys.
Right, which would be tough, because we don't meet over the summer. And if we're gonna take a look at it, it's probably more comprehensive than just the ones that's too, it should be something that we're thinking about beyond just our front door, you know?
Well, I think, I think Nick suggested like banners, for example, could come up, so for example.
No, 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 I'm talking about, so I, I think, I think that, you read it fairly quickly, but I think it kind of, kind of limited it to what we would put and display outside of the school.
It would be, I would, I was thinking more outside of the school, because outside of the school, to me, starts representing the town as well, because it is town property.
So we're gonna make, if we're gonna make a policy, we should make it, we should make it comprehensive, there's no reason not to make it comprehensive at this point. Uh, rather than do a piecemeal, uh, because things are gonna come up, you know, it is what it is, right? So, um, if, if you, you want to take a stab at it with Joe, then it works for me.
So, so the other thing too is, um, I, I just did some trying to figure out, when I, I had that from Nick, I started to kind of see like what communities have, against schools just community, because so I think one of the things we have to look at is also the, uh, if, is there a is there language in the bylaws of the town going around lawn signs, so there are communities that have that, I don't know that all communities do, uh, I just saw some of the communities on the list that.
They're restrictive, are putting any lawn signs up?
They're restrictive, they're either restrictive to only private homes, or they're restrictive to uh, non-for-profit organizations that meet the goals of A, B, C, D, E. That type of stuff, they're actually.
14th or something?
Right, so like Arlington and, and they just have like, like an A, B, C, this is what is accepted by the select board and the school community, and it's kind of like a, a one. It's what's done for the town regardless.
Well, can I just, can I just add to that as well, I have some, some real concerns about the policy. Or, or Nick, how you kind of read it there, because we've got to think about some other signs, I know you mentioned ITAC, but when we lost Deputy Chief Peterson. You know, we had a sign up supporting him, um, when we lost a student, Briella, we had a sign up supporting her, so, and her family, so I, I I think that we really need to think long and hard about this, because at the end of the day, we're all about supporting our students, our families, and I think limiting it. I think we have to put some serious consideration into this. Uh, yeah, I, I, I'll just leave it at that, because I definitely have some concern.
Yeah, I mean, like I said, my bigger concern is it's not the sign right now, that I don't want it to come off that way, because I fully in support. What I'm afraid of is opening that can of worms, that what is the next sign? And then we're all going to be trying to sit here, trying to be like, oh, we're gonna allow this sign, we're not gonna allow that sign, and so on and so forth, and how does, and then when does it stop and how does it end, you know? Um, so I get, that's my bigger concern is, you know, again, sure, I completely agree with you with, you know, some of the community aspects and and things that we need, that's why I think putting something in there that must be approved by Norton School Committee gives us the ability to say, hey, this makes sense, you know, obviously too, I think Tommy Peterson, we could tie back very easily to the schools, being a coach on football and, and helping out within the community as well, obviously students, uh, you know, student passing away, obviously is another one, but I just think we need to be very careful in terms of what we are promoting um, on school grounds, because again, it is a public entity, and you know, we don't want to make it look like we're favoring one group over another, so.
Alright, so I think the plan for this, if you agree, is something you can work on and bring to us in the fall. Um, and again, you know, we'll have to go through.
You have to be, yeah, you have to do two readings, you gotta send it to legal, which is not that difficult, but legally probably. Maybe they already have some that would fit the, the wishes of the committee, I don't know. Again, that's something we can work on, I'm happy to do it, and get the information, and it can make the decisions on the level that it wants to use.
I mean, my, my concern, just to not, before we put this to bed, is we may have to make it such that it has to be approved by the superintendent in case we're not meeting. You know, for, for example, like if someone wanted to put something up over the summer, we're not, we don't have any meeting scheduled, we would have to, you know, enable them, so that could be of consideration.
Sure. Yeah, so, so just think about the fundraisers that are done at the local level by a school, JCS has a fundraiser, or LGM apparently has a fundraiser. They put out some lawn signs, now we have to go through the process potentially of either, that's considered a and, you know, educational, because they have the PTO, TA, so it doesn't matter. So we'll have to come.
I think it's some work to do and then.
The online comments are suggesting, well, that could take time, and then the fundraising gets held back because of it.
What would the process be?
Correct, correct, I think, I completely agree, we need some definitely type of process, but I think like the JCS fund run, that's a school-sponsored event, I don't think that would technically be based on what I'm thinking right now, that would need our approval, because, it's our school sponsor, you know, it's just like if we were gonna do a football game, you know, same idea that, hey, we're doing homecoming. We can throw a homecomings down out there, and we don't need us, because it's, you know, from.
Differentiation between outside group and sponsor.
Exactly, exactly.
And if I can just add, I, I think that I'm not necessarily opposed to having the superintendent who sort of oversees our school's duty decision-maker, I don't know, I know Nick and your um, sort of proposal, you said the school committee, but I rarely think that we have a superintendent who should be able to have sort of the authority to make those decisions. Um, I'm not, I think a policy is fine, but I, I do wonder if it should be directed to the superintendent and not to the school committee.
Carolyn, it's really no different than like flyers that are submitted, like when there's a flyer for ITAC or anything parking rec that we used to do, Nick. Um, we would always send it to Dr. Byetta for approval, and once he gave approval, then it would go, you know, then it would go from there, so I, I agree, Carolyn, I think it makes more sense.
Yeah, I mean, this is work to do on it, at this point, I think we table it.
We were able to brainstorm some ideas to start, so.
I think the big component would be legal. Any other business? If there is anybody that wants to address the meeting public comments, at this time, you will be given three minutes on a timer. No statements that are deemed inflammatory will be allowed. State your name and address for the record. Is there anybody that would like to approach?
Hi, good evening, everybody, my name is James Thomason. Live here in Norton, 10 James Street. Uh, and so maybe to push that ball along a little quicker, uh, that you were just discussing. I would like to propose, based on uh, uh, track record that uh, signs uh, bearing the Christian flag be placed in, on all school grounds. Um, every year, uh, from Palm Sunday through Easter. Uh, since uh, the Supreme Court decision that's already been mentioned, and to allow religious speech, which is noted in that decision uh, is not uh, establishing a religion, but allowing, so since speech has been allowed by non-school entity, a public civic entity. Um, I would like to request, uh, and I would, I will certainly submit this in writing. Uh, that uh, again, each year, beginning on Palm Sunday and after Easter. That uh, signs of the Christian flag be placed on all school grounds. Christian flag is a uh, blue, a red cross on a blue background, you know, on a white field, generally accepted. If you've been in churches, I'm sure you've seen those uh, before, so I would like to make that request uh, based on the Supreme Court decision and uh, the fact that Norton, as you have said, has allowed speech. And the Supreme Court did uh, identify those flags as speech. So, uh, and since it's allowed non-school entity civic organizations to uh, speak in this way, I think, and we think that
You have one minute left.
It opens up also for this flag to be placed in uh, speech, equal speech. So thank you for your time, I appreciate it very much, and I'm sure that might light a fire under your policy debate and discussion, thanks.
Evening again, Chuck, you're on a two-way road, I concur with what the last speaker said, the reason I'm up here is I'm concerned about, I have a daughter that's seven years old in first grade, and some of the literature that she has access to, I think should be investigated. She brought home two books during the school year, that um, one of them was about a Vietnam veteran, a Marine in Vietnam. Getting in firefighting, getting shot at in a fighting hole. And I don't think that type of material should be accessible to a first grade. Another book that she brought home was about the Titanic. And one of the signs, uh, sentences says, the unspeakable shrieking of hundreds of people dying filled the night, frenzied terrified screams. I don't believe this is material that a first grader should be reading, or have access to. I understand the realities of life, and they're gonna learn all this stuff, and they should learn all this stuff, but a first grade should not, a seven-year-old should not be coming home with material like that, so who knows what else is in these libraries? I really think it's important that research and the material that's available to these kids, a seven-year-old should be learned about hundreds of people screaming to death in the middle of the night. With that, I yield the rest of my time to Kelly Young.
Um, I'm gonna stop you there. You cannot yield time. Not allowed. It's out of our discretion to not speak, and you give them three minutes, so if you want to continue, you have a minute and 40 seconds, you're welcome.
It's appropriate that you dictate the amount of time that I can and cannot give to somebody, you shouldn't have that right to make that decision. It's appropriate that you dictate the amount of time that I can and cannot give to somebody. You shouldn't have that right to make that decision.
He has ever met.
Let me speak. You gave me three minutes. You gave me three minutes. I took a minute of that and I gave the other two minutes to the school. And you're not allowing it because you don't want to hear what we want to say. That is the truth.
My name is Kelly Gallagher, two zero one, excuse me, two zero one Bay Road. I would appreciate if some members of the board, particularly on this end, wouldn't laugh when moms of the public come up and speak their piece. I think that's very unprofessional and rude. And I bring my children to school to learn reading, writing and math. I never imagined I would be dropping off my children at their preschool in elementary schools, surrounded by signs displaying and promoting sexuality. Does the school committee think it's appropriate to display sexuality signs to our minors? Is it appropriate to display them in elementary schools? Is it appropriate to display a particular political ideology to our children? Why is it so important for this district to share sexuality speech with our little kids? But most importantly, is this legal? There are laws in this state that protect parental rights regarding curriculum involving human sexual or human sexuality issues. I believe this district is violating the parental notification law, often known as section thirty-two A, which requires you to notify families in writing of this material and requires you to inform families they may exempt their children from such material. I believe by, I believe by placing these components of the human sexuality curriculum on school grounds in the manner they have been placed, you are unable to comply with the exemption clause of section thirty-two A and are therefore violating the law. By allowing signs created by a private group of citizens to be posted on school grounds, you have now opened up the district to all private groups being able to display their signs on school property, as we discussed, the recent U.S. Supreme Court decision affirms this. To say I'm disappointed about this district is an understatement. All of the past six months, this district introduced videos and pictures to first graders about children changing their gender. Children were illegally tested for COVID by nurses who did not obtain the required parental consent. Children's private medical information was disclosed to their class by their teacher. A disturbing health survey was approved by the school committee and only postponed after a backlash by parents. Barbecue and other flavored crickets, yes, insects, were served to and eaten by elementary students without written parental consent. A school library is unable to provide a list of recent books they ordered and when the request was adjusted, there was a stipulation of seven hundred dollars to release that information. You, the school committee, willfully violate your own policies. As someone who deals with regulatory compliance every day, the actions by this district and the lack of transparency are shocking. Our children deserve to have their innocence protected. When I was in elementary school, I never knew if my teachers were married, let alone what their sexual orientation was. I didn't even know what sex was because I was a child and my parents thankfully gave me the gift of childhood. It's amazing to me that not wanting my young children exposed to gender ideology or sexual content from other adults or strangers is treated as a controversial position. It's my job as a parent to have these discussions with my children. Teaching one philosophy or social ideology to public school students is indoctrination, not education. We, the parents, want our schools to teach our children how to think.
Ms. Gallagher, your time is up.
Please respectfully request fifteen more seconds.
Ms. Gallagher, your time is up.
Just ten more seconds, please.
Is on. Thank you.
It says right in the school policy and the school committee.
Your time is up. Thank you.
Don't raise your voice to me, sir. I've been nothing but polite with you and I'm respectfully asking for ten seconds.
Return to your seat, please.
Don't tell me what to do about returning my seat, sir.
You can return to your seat or you can leave my meeting.
Okay, your meeting. This isn't the people's meeting. This is our meeting. The nature of the public, not the taxpayers, not the parents. Thank you, thank you for exposing everybody, exposing yourself to everybody.
Any other business?
Hi, I'm Shannon Taylor and the president of the Northern Teachers Association. This is not about sex or sexuality. This is about identity. MPS strives to maintain an inclusive environment that is safe and supportive for all students. This district also maintains that diversity, equity, inclusion are, are initiative bars. It's consistent with our state directives and our curriculum frameworks. We have students, colleagues and families who are LGBTQ plus and they deserve to know they are learning in an environment that accepts them for who they are without question. Our jobs as educators is to foster a safe and respectful environment, especially for historically marginalized students and colleagues who face difficulties that others do not. The flags are aligned with our values. This is about empowering students, helping them feel seen and appreciated. It's about helping students see that their community is diverse in ways that they don't always see and telling them that they are a part of an exclusive space, inclusive space. Again, this is not about sex. This is about identity and I, as a part of the LGBTQ plus community, am extremely proud to be an educator here in Norton where diversity, inclusivity and pride matter, not just on paper, but in practice. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gallagher. Hey, there's no other business. Entertaining motion.
Hi, my name is Amy Weber. I am teacher in Norton and vice president of the Norton Teachers Association. And I'm speaking as a parent of an LGBT, LGBTQ child, not a Norton, who is not a Norton student. I spoke actually to a Norton parent whose children did ask her what the signs were about. She has a preschooler and a second grader. And I thought she explained in a really age-appropriate way, just said that these signs allow kids to be themselves and show their true colors. My experience is that my son came out in ninth grade with the loving support of his father and myself. It was still an extremely hard time for him. And it continues to not always be easy, but luckily his school community and his hometown have been loving and inclusive. I believe that LGBTQ students need to feel accepted. As Shannon said, it's not about teaching them anything. It's about acceptance. My son thankfully feels accepted in both his school and hometown community. But we obviously have a long way to go. I recently read us a book called House in the Cerulean Sea by T.J. Klune, and I wanted to share this quote with my son and all students who are facing such kind of hate and questioning their place. Hate is loud, but I think you'll learn it is because it is only a few people shouting, desperate to be heard. You might not ever be able to change their minds, but so long as you remember, you're not alone, you will overcome. As a teacher in Norton and a parent, I want to, I want all my students to feel as supportive as my son does. Thanks.
Anyone else? Entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting. So, is there a second?
Second.
All is in favor.
Hi.
Have a good night. Have a good rest of the school year. Safe summer.